Call this meeting in order. Uh, tonight we're gonna be led in the pledge by Ethan Whitaker. He's a student of Rock Springs Middle School, Crew 398.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Ethan. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. This is the first of three special called meetings, uh, in regards to the, uh, trying to come up with a final zoning for Stewart's Creek High School. Everybody knows we've already had four public hearings and, uh, gotten a lot of comments that, uh, hopefully we'll be able to address a lot of them tonight. I'd just like to go over the, uh, the timetable for the next two meetings we've got. Uh, the next meeting we will have will be next Tuesday, November 20th at 5:30, and Tuesday, December 4th at 5:30. Hopefully, uh, we'll be able to make a final, get a final, uh, vote that night. Today, I've, uh, I've talked, I think I've made contact with, uh, each board member to try to, uh, try to give some kind of ideas how we should proceed forward and, uh, and talk with each one of you. We've got a consensus, uh, basically what I propose. So, just, uh, put it out to the general public, tonight, what we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna start out. Mr. Oldham's gonna basically discuss the academics and, uh, the athletic programs in regards to Stewart's Creek. I think we had several questions in regards to that. After that, we're gonna have Mr. Uh, Mr. Oldham and Mr. Morgan go over the comments. I think everybody, uh, got your books of comments from each, each public hearing we had. Uh, and we're not, my understanding is you're not gonna cover each individual one because, uh, in each area, there's several same complaints for the same areas. So, uh, I would like to just say thank you to Ms. Michaels, uh, Mr. Evans, and Mr. Morgan for, uh, doing a good job on getting our book compiled. There's a lot of, a lot of question, uh, a lot of comments in there. Uh, after we do that, we'll take just general comments or questions from board members, and at that time, uh, anything that they haven't covered, if you have questions on, just feel free to ask that. And we'll, uh, we'll end up, Mr. Oldham makes the final comments. I think he has some on sibling rules and stuff like that that, uh, he likes to bring to the forefront. Next meeting, uh, like I said, Tuesday, November 20th. At that time, uh, we'll get recommendations. Mr. Oldham and, uh, any board members that want, uh, to bring any changes, recommendations at that time, we'll discuss those. Plus, uh, I'm sure some of the questions that board members have tonight, uh, you'll bring back answers next time too. So, uh, then after that, hopefully, December 4th, we'll, we'll be able to finalize everything. So, Mr. Oldham, I'm gonna turn it over to you now and, uh, let you and Mr. Morgan carry on.
Okay. Guess the first thing we want to address again was, in general, about Stewart's Creek High School, um, was the academic offerings and the athletics. So, in form of academics, we are committed to offering the same academic programs that we offer in all of our other high schools. Um, and we have Dr. Harold with us tonight, which will be the new principal of Stewart's Creek High School. And I know he agrees with me because we've discussed this. Certainly, the AP courses, those offerings, our intention is to make sure that they're offered. So, um, there'll not be any loss that I can see in academics for Stewart's Creek High School. In fact, I think you're gonna see some CTE offerings. There's one or two courses that is not offered somewhere else. There'll be some opportunities there, and some specialty courses that may not be at other high schools. But, um, my commitment is to see that we have a full academic program there. So, I do not see that really as a, as the issue. The athletics, um, the athletics, the schedule, we have a partial schedule for football games and all. Interesting what's happening, uh, and this doesn't, is not just Stewart's Creek High School. Now that the T double S double A has gone to the, uh, total number of wins, um, places like Galatin are not wanting to come into Rutherford County and play football now. Interestingly enough. So, um, I was talking with Gail Vick this afternoon at Blackman High. They're having difficulty getting, um, schools in our area which used to play, you know, in the district a lot. They're, why would you come into Rutherford County when we have the reputation for football that we have? So, um, she said that they, last year, had to take two trips out of the area and very well may have to do it next year too. And I don't think Stewart's Creek High will be any different. And I know you went to a meeting the other day, didn't you, I think, with T double S double A? Were you able to get most of the schedule at that point?
I think, as you know, we call it district games, um, typically a contract with one verbal to.
Okay.
So, we're trying to pitch on, and I think games where at least the competition with the non-district level can be, um, more equal.
Yeah. Typically, when a new school opens, especially if you allow students to remain at their existing high schools as juniors and seniors, uh, it's a great opportunity for some people that may have been on second or third string to get an opportunity to be a starter at a new high school, which I think can happen at Stewart's Creek High, um, just from sheer numbers of students. It usually takes two or three years to build. But, anyway, the schedules are being done. We're full participant with T double S double A, so we're certainly marching on with that as, as well as we can. So, our intention is to offer the athletic programs to also. Um, another thing that I might say to the general public, those that are watching on television and those are in our audience tonight, um, one of the things that affects us is not only distance, it really is density. And one of the issues that we face around Blackman High School since it's been built in the last several years, and those of you that may live close to it know about the apartments that's being built around Blackman High School. Um, our, our charge as a school system is that we have, we have to have a classroom for those students, uh, whether it's in a portable or whether it's in a, a classroom. So, now that we have a new high school coming online next fall, and our desire to, to minimize the use of portables if we can, we're trying to place some students in a permanent classroom rather than, than to keep the number of portables. And I, and I know that's the same charge to the board. Uh, when you build a, a building, we spend almost fifty million dollars, forty something million dollars on that facility, and you have a hundred and forty-nine portables out there, we need to address that. We need to put the students in this facility. But, again, it's driven by density. Again, if you look around a building, uh, very often initially, especially initially, uh, you may have to get closer to a building than you intended maybe, uh, simply to do the balance of the numbers. That's what we're talking about. Somewhere down the road, you know that Rutherford County, this board's been very wise in the fact that, of course, Stewart's Creek will now be the third high school in that, or, uh, third school in that complex. Uh, parents really, really did like the concept at, uh, Blackman High. They like having an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school in close proximity because very often, parents have students in more than one grade level. And so, that works very well. Stewart's Creek will then complete another one of those for us. You have Stewart's Creek Elementary, Stewart's Creek Middle, Stewart's Creek High will be there. Um, we have, some of that is really happening now even in the Oakland area. Even though, uh, when, when you look at Oakland, you, you have John Pittard, which happens to be a city school there, but you have Oakland Middle, Oakland High School there. We have some of the same thing that's occurring at Siegel. You really have Irma Siegel, which is a city school there, and you have Siegel Middle School, and you have Siegel High School. So, it's very attractive to, to the public, to our constituents really, uh, to high schools in somewhat of a cluster, especially if they're, uh, carrying their children back and forth. So, as you look at some of the zone lines, you have to realize that we have to then look at what's being built or proposed near the school. And you'll see that in some of the maps that we have of this evening. The way we're gonna proceed, we're gonna talk about, uh, looking at, at some of the areas if we can. I'll ask, uh, Mr. Morgan will do that. He's got the general map. He'll be able to answer many of your questions tonight about how many students, that sort of thing, as the board kind of comes up with that. We've gone through and made some notes of some areas that, that were really predominant in looking at it. So, taking a look at, uh, Mr. Morgan, can you point out, say, the Oakton area for us? Will you do that as one? Taking a look at that. Oakton is an area that, that's, okay, adding the streets. Uh, we had several parents that requested to remain again at, um, Blackman High School. About how many students do we have in that particular area? Do you remember, call that off the numbers?
There are, uh, in this entire block here, there are close to twenty.
Close to twenty high school students in that area. Um, we're, we're not making a recommendation tonight, really, about that area, but that's one that you received several comments on, where people was saying, like, to stay at, uh, Blackman High. Will you slide on over to Shores Road also from there? Uh, Shores Road, old Shores Way is also part of that. And that was in one of the areas, again, when we talked about some open areas that we might be able to, to take a look at, uh, for future growth and some open areas, then Shores Road came to our attention. Also, at the far right of this map, uh, Shores Road empties again on 102 Ammerville Road, which goes really is the primary road that comes to where Stewart's Creek High School is. So, we looked at that also when we drew that line. And there's an, about how many people do you remember we had on the Shores Road area?
Uh, the total area below 840 was around forty.
Around forty students total. So, that's what we're looking at there. Um, but, again, in, in our second recommendation to you, the Oakton and the Shores Road, we recommended that they go Stewart's Creek High. Again, from the time we started to the density and the apartments and the things that were being built, made us take another look at, um, what can we do to get some relief at, at Blackman High School? So, that played a big part in it. Another one in that area, um, is Foothills. So, you wanna slide down and take, let us take a look at Foothills? Foothills subdivision, and I can remember when I was at David Urie and in Smyrna. Originally, of course, before we had Blackman High School and that, the children attended Smyrna. And it was there. They were driving actually a further distance. At that time, we're going to David Urie and the other middle schools and all that were in Smyrna, then it'll actually be to Stewart's Creek. So, it did have a history at that time of going to Smyrna because we did not have another school offering there. Um, that sits so far into our zone, basically, for Stewart's Creek High School. It's really tough to pull that one out and not, in all fairness, maybe not be able to pull some of the others. So, I, you know, my recommendation probably is still gonna remain for Foothills, go to Stewart's Creek High School. Take a look at that one. I think the other one that you had, you received some comments on, Mr. Morgan, in some of our public hearings. Was Clover Hill and Farmwood, that little area?
Yes, sir. That area is just below the open subdivision.
That was one that you, that was pulled in at the last, and, and one of the, one of the, uh, comments we offered Clover Hill and Farmwood was, again, it opened back on, uh, Brinkley Road and all with that. That was what a lot of people made the comment. About how many students do we have in that area?
Four.
Four students right now is what we have in that area. Okay? So, that, that receives a lot of your comments. Um, let's go a little bit more, if we could, north now and take a look at, um, we received a comment from one on, like, it was seventy, sixty-eight Old Nashville Highway, which is one parcel up there.
That's right.
That's right in that area. Um, and we have that one at Smyrna High School, and basically, the way the roads exiting from, they said, you know, it may be easier actually for them to even go to Stewart's Creek High School. So, that was a request, basically, to go kind of to Stewart's Creek. So, as we revisit that again, and there's one student right now, I think?
Yes, sir.
Or something like that? But it's kind of where that, the exit for that one happens to be. So, that one's, uh, might be worth taking a look at. The other one, uh, another area that drew quite a bit of tension, uh, would you go up to the Seven Oaks area? At our, at our meeting at Smyrna High School, um, we had several people, I think, six, seven or so at least, that lived in Seven Oaks that talked about, um, they, they would really like for us to reconsider for them maybe to go to Stewart's Creek High School rather than Smyrna. You know, when we had our first drawing for Smyrna, um, at that time, they were, they were actually gonna go to Stewart's Creek, that whole block between kind of the Old Nashville Highway and the I-24 there. Of course, when we added some back to Smyrna, since that time, Mr. Morgan met with Smyrna Planning Commission and found out they are six apartments being planned for that area of Smyrna High, up to a thousand units. And one of those apartments is actually in that Seven Oaks area. I actually drove that, I was in Smyrna today and drove through this area. Um, a good bit of it is built out, but show them where that other apartment is gonna be. And there's a sign there now on the, off of Seven Oaks Drive that multi-family dwelling. But our understanding, it's already been so, it's kind of listing it so, but our understanding is being...
It's on Seven Oaks Boulevard somewhere.
It is. It is up there in that blank area, right up in there. That's where you are right there, best what I can tell today. So, that's one of the apartment complexes being planned. So, um, if it would make people, a lot of people that's in that area, if they would be happy to go to Stewart's Creek High School, it would certainly relieve them, possibly one of those growth areas of apartment later on that could be to Stewart's Creek. Also, we move another. And the total number of students in that one's about?
Uh, almost a hundred.
Almost a hundred students. So, that would, that would change your numbers a little bit. When we talked about Smyrna High, we were a little bit concerned with that, the numbers over eighteen hundred. That has a tendency to adjust that to give them a little bit more growth by about a hundred students. And also would increase you enrollment at Stewart's Creek High, I think, by about a hundred doing that. Um, the other, the other ones that we had were, um, more or less random comments here and there. They're not clustered in areas of subdivision. So, I, I think these areas that we pointed out has addressed most of the areas that you're talking about. Um, did any of you have another area that, at this point, that concerns you possibly that you have looked at? Of course, what we want to do tonight is to hear from you when, um, if you have other areas concerned that we can bring back to our second meeting with that. Uh, but I would really kind of like to know as much as we can tonight so that we can kind of prepare the map for you with potential changes that I'll make as a recommendation to accommodate as many of these, um, public hearings that we can, again, within reason, so that we can, can reduce that number at Blackman High School, reduce the number at Smyrna High, reduce the number at Laverne High. We, we really did not have too many from the Laverne area on that most northern end. Since we kind of used I-24, most people felt pretty good about going on to Stewart's Creek from that. So, that was, didn't see that as a particular issue from the people that spoke there. We're happy to go to Stewart's Creek High because of the I-24 to that. Mr. Hodg, that's most, I think, of the major areas. Now, I presented, there's one other sheet of paper that you have in your packet tonight because during the public hearings, we had several people talk about, uh, how about siblings? How about if there's a junior or senior, uh, you know, at Smyrna High School, something would, could siblings stay or at any of the other high schools that might be affected by the zoning? So, you have one that actually has eighth and ninth grade students, and that's this year's numbers. Should look like this year, or somewhere, I think we should have that one.
So, these are rising freshmen and sophomores?
They would be rising freshmen and sophomores. Um, and so, when you, and, and they are by areas, uh, much of what we've been discussing tonight. It lets you see how many we're talking about. Of course, anytime you consider siblings, and if you have, if we have a sibling rule for freshmen and sophomores, it, uh, means it's about four years to clear that because some will come in as a freshman before you actually get back to your zone again. We have that, done that some in the past. The total number, if you notice, there's about a hundred and twenty-two. Um, now, how many will opt to do that? Um, you know, kind of historically, some, well, fifty percent new Brits do tend to draw when people see the program at Stewart's Creek High School and choose to, there, I'm not saying if all the siblings that a hundred and twenty-two would stay. I think half of those or so will actually go on to Stewart's Creek High. Because you're gonna have juniors and seniors that are gonna also opt to go on to Stewart's Creek High. Uh, you know, you'll have that. So, the, the maximum number that we can count right now, based upon the numbers we have today, is about a hundred and twenty-two siblings in this area that would be impacted. With estimating maybe fifty percent might go or fifty percent might stay. And that could vary a little bit. That's basically the new documents we had for you tonight, Mr. Hodg, and looking at, uh, as we went through the, the comments, the public comments, was most of the areas that we had clustered together. Yes, sir.
What was the, uh, additional student count for Blackman High School at the first of this year? Was it a hundred and sixty?
Um, it, it was about a hundred and sixty today. The end of the third month, which ended on eleven nine, you know, last week, the total number of students there was two thousand three hundred and seventy-three. That's what we have there. And if you remember from the paper recently, um, that's the largest high school in Tennessee right now.
And historically, Blackman High has grown basically that much each year?
Pretty much. And, you know, we did, we've done some zoning or timing too. For a while, um, Riverdale High was our largest, if you remember that. And so, we did some shifting a few years ago and put a few more in Blackman at that time. But that area's just grown so much since then. Um, Riverdale High's counted the end of the third month, uh, was basically two thousand students. So, at the top, in student enrollment of the top twenty high schools of the state of Tennessee, six of them's in Rutherford County. I mean, that, that was the findings when we checked T double S double A numbers. Uh, so, that's, that's why trying to look ahead a little bit and anticipate growth and creating some room for growth is one of the reasons we looked at the zoning for Blackman High School. To try to put them, where you can guarantee students pretty much at Stewart's Creek High, you're not gonna be in a portal. You're gonna be in a classroom with some room to go.
I guess my question, based up here on your numbers, uh, where you got, uh, Laverne, sixteen eighty on down the line there, that's what you're projecting, correct?
Um, this, this is with the zoning as the line we have last presented.
Last one presented.
Now, that wouldn't, that could change if you throw in a sibling rule or if we tonight decide to, that's, the, the largest one was, uh, Seven Oaks up there. If you decide to pull that back from that, you could reduce Smyrna High School back to the seventeen hundred something range. You could increase Stewart's Creek High to the over sixteen hundred, you know?
That's based on fifty percent?
Well, fifty percent from a hundred and twenty-two, the siblings, so you, well, if you rezone that, I think you're, if they don't have, if they don't have a sibling there, a junior or senior, then they would go directly to Stewart's Creek next year. That would be the zone line for them. So, of that number of students that he has, roughly, they would go unless there's a junior, they have an older sibling that would be a junior or senior at Smyrna High School.
Okay. So, with projected twenty thirteen enrollment of seven, was it seventeen ninety-nine for Blackman? Seventeen ninety-nine and rising juniors and seniors all, all state? And, and we get another hundred and sixty new students at Blackman High School, we're back up to the two thousand mark.
Yes, and I, I met with, uh, Gail Vick, who was this afternoon. We sat and talked a few minutes about this. She said that she's got so many teachers roving in her building, you know, there's not a classroom now, and every, rooms are used every period. She said she basically told them at the start of this year, let's, we can do this kind of for one year, you know, or so. She said her thoughts are now, it's not going to go away at the end of this year. She's still gonna have a, a number of roving teachers and possibly portable classrooms. I mean, they're still with Stewart's Creek opening. And, and really, the only way, there's not a lot of other places to pull students into Stewart's Creek at this point. You really, coming down towards Blackman and Keith, right up there, it's the Smyrna area, is about all that we have left. So, I, you know, from my estimation over the years, I would think, you know, nineteen hundred certainly would not be out of the question next year with her normal, and then, the count is growing at a little over two percent. That area is growing more near the four percent range. So, as you begin to look at four percent of seventeen hundred, you know, then you've got that sixty, eighty there in just growth for a year plus the sibling rule or anything else that might go into effect. So, not out of the question to see nineteen hundred to two thousand at all.
Next year.
Next year.
Mr. Holder?
There was a, I, I know it's part of the Shores Road discussion, but there was a specific, uh, either subdivision or road that I'm looking to see a, a response on, a Big Sandia.
Sandia.
Yeah. Can you show that specifically?
This is that road right there.
Okay.
How many students did we send you, recall, since the name wasn't? Yeah, there's not very many.
Eleven.
Mr. Morgan has his map up tonight that lets him come up with this. We're using the, the dynamic feature of it. And incidentally, um, Friday, the GIS presentation is at Siegel High School. You see the invitation to that. Um, the company that purchased this GIS software to the county and that we purchased from too, offered us about two years ago, the opportunity, when I was in instruction, uh, Mr. Morgan came to me and said, "They're really offering us a good deal because the county's using it to help students learn this as part of geography courses and all." It is for a fee much less than purchasing new software by tacking on to what we have now to let us expand to the high school for these courses. So, I mean, it's at, at Central Magnet School, uh, you know, Siegel High School that we're looking at. So, what you're looking at is that same software, some of the same abilities that the students would have taking courses and that. Might be focused on something different than student counts, but it's the same software we're talking about. It's, it's a good, good package.
Is there some signature?
No, no, I, I would say, I just wanted to see it there.
Okay. I, I guess, and I'm sort of not prepared to go any deeper with, with moves really Blackman, but that's, that's the issue that we've got. I know as well, Sheldon has already mentioned, Blackman High School, they are busting at the seams. Uh, and subdivision or two that are certainly within great proximity of Blackman High School, we, we, to, to change that number, that just simply puts that bigger burden back on Blackman, the portables. I know we've got people concerned about that. I just, I think we've all looked at that, only we find an answer to changing something away, over travel Blackman further. I, I'm, I'm sure we have accomplished as much as we need to Blackman now to, to really over travel. And to make any major adjustment at all, I, I just don't... And to make any major adjustment at all, I just don't see how we can make that kind of work. There's a, there's a way, I don't see it.
There's a thousand and ninety-eight at Blackman Middle at the end of the third month. What Mr. Shelton was doing, his email to you is, he had gone to the city and talked about, what is your upcoming number of sixth graders? What's your number of sixth graders that will be going into seventh? You know, sometimes they wait until the seventh to come from the city system to us. And, and his prediction number is really coming from real data that he's saying about students that will be moving up. So that's, that's what his basis. And even if the city builds a new elementary, it could take some sixth graders. I, I think you're two years off because I don't think they've selected the property yet about where they're going to build their new elementary, so. That's an issue.
What was that number he quoted?
He's ten ninety-eight, that was eleven, what was that number? He said, I didn't, I did not bring it to you today.
Coming in next year.
And he thought he, he would be, was in the upper part of eleven-hundred possibly.
I'd say it was over the fifty.
Yeah, I admitted to the upper part of eleven-fifty, I just didn't bring it tonight.
What I do know this board doesn't want to do is come back two years from now and rezone again because we're full. So I think Mr. Tackett's right, you know, we, I'm not sure that we pulled enough out to, to give Blackman the relief it's going to need as it continues to fix, to grow.
We literally might find ourselves having to look at a middle school installation between Stewart's Creek Middle and Rock Vale Middle. If this Blackman thing continues to grow like this, you have a little bit of capacity to go. Because that's a transportation issue and distance again. But you can just put so many on the Blackman Middle side. I mean, and, and I'd say this again for television audience and everyone else, you have to have lunch periods. You have to have a reasonable time to get the students through to eat their lunch. And you, you don't really want to have to start at ten fifteen in the morning. You know, your capacity, your core capacity of your buildings begin to play into this heavily. And so even though you can tack on a few portals, it does not solve the problem at all about access to lunch periods and total library, design space, those sort of things begin to play in there, which is in the quality of your education.
Mr. Holder, do you anticipate that in the next two meetings, we may consider the, or reconsider the Seven Oaks, Sam Davis Meadows area there in Smyrna, based on the additional information that we've gotten from the Smyrna Planning Commission?
I, the reason I really, after reading the comments and looking at it and getting with Mr. Morgan, looking at the numbers, it makes really a lot of sense to me to add that to the Stewart's Creek High School. And I did mention that to Mr. Powell today. I said, we're looking at this again, simply because it's been several parents requested and it interrupted the close, you know, Ammerville Road there and transportation out to Stewart's Creek High. It makes sense.
If that occurs, I would certainly expect that you would, the staff would bring information of the impact to socioeconomic numbers that we've looked at and, and all of that information as well?
That area, we've already, we've already discussed that. That area, as I talked to Mr. Powell today, he said that's, it's very close to what our existing numbers are. And you know, Norfolk County now is free and reduced. It's somewhere in the forty-three, forty-three and a half percent, forty-four percent numbers. So that area, if you pull it out and look at it, is very similar to that number as a district. Smyrna High has the potential to go up to fifty-one, fifty-two percent in some of our estimates, you know, with the rezoning of Stewart's Creek High.
Do we anticipate that that number at Smyrna High School would move substantially with this?
No.
Yes, sir, we're talking about less than one percent in the direction.
Good. It does, however, give us also a transportation issue, were we to consider that. One of the things that we don't have is predominantly, we don't have anything that goes across Interstate twenty-four. And some residents of Smyrna that have expressed to me the congestion of the Ammerville Road and I twenty-four interchange there. And that anyone who might be on the east side of that interchange have the opportunity to go to the east. Specifically, it was raised to be Stuart Springs Drive, which is on the south side of Ammerville Road. But it's just a small little area there, but traffic wise, it might be easier for them to make a left turn out of subdivision rather than a right turn and, and those kind of things.
Stuart Springs, Springs Drive.
Stuart Springs Drive. Again, I'm not suggesting because that would be an isolated little area that we would have to get a bus transportation across and everything. But if we were to take a look at Seven Oaks, Sam Davis Meadows and Lee Crossings, we might also include Stuart Springs Drive, which is on the opposite side. It would give us one collection there that are on the east side of twenty-four.
Because one of our issues is also in the middle school, at Smyrna Middle. You know, we have portals there. You're a little bit of distance from Rock Springs Middle, which really is on the other side, actually. I twenty-four, if we look at it. So even for our middle schools there, there's not a lot of flexibility. But then you've got Smyrna Middle, Rock Springs Middle, Stewart's Creek Middle. You've kind of got that little circle there. And again, just to remind you again, typically, people think, well, maybe we can go in the same elementary school, but it takes two to three elementary schools fill our middle schools. And typically, when you look at your zoning, you'll have two or three middle schools that it takes to fill a high school. And the way you look at that would be like, what's incoming freshman class? I mean, is the class going to be four hundred students, which would be about sixteen-hundred for the high school? So four hundred students, well, that middle school might only send two hundred students or so, or two fifty. So you really have that multiple zoning to fill a high school, from a middle, from the elementary to a middle to a high school. So there's, there's not, unless you live in a particular place, there's not necessarily a straight line shot that I'm going to be at Stewart's Creek Elementary, Stewart's Creek Middle, Stewart's Creek High. If you're in the fringe, the further away you get from that location, the less likely that that might happen.
But Stuart Springs Drive, Mr. Holder, he's talking about, how many students are you talking about?
It's directly across from Lee Crossings. You see the little collection of streets there?
This one right here?
That's, well, directly across the street, across Ammerville Road.
On this side?
It was there on this side over here.
I'm sorry, not on Ammerville, but Nissan Boulevard.
Okay.
See, there's Stuart Springs Drive in the green.
Under.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right there.
That is Adelaide Park. Adelaide Park, should we do?
Yes, please.
Thirty-three.
But you were talking about moving Smyrna High School to Stewart's Creek or?
It's just something to consider. If we're going to make some adjustments right in that area, you know, if, if, if we're not making adjustments, I wouldn't have brought it up, but since we are considering some adjustments there, it was brought up that access to that subdivision is going to require getting underneath twenty-four, down Nissan Boulevard to get in there. Whereas everything else would potentially have another route to get to it. That particular subdivision, the easiest route would be a left-hand turnout up to Smyrna High School. So I, I don't know which way it falls, but you know, it's, it's worth us considering if we're adjusting in that geographic area.
Well, we have some time to think about it and come back to it, so.
What else?
I'd like to still just Cloverhill Farmwood Drive. There is off the coast and try to do a little again there.
One or four students?
Yes, sir.
What'd you put in?
We did have some comments on that. I mean, there's not a lot of students, but I do, I understand they're coming because we're drawing the big lines to the map and we did it. And you then look where that street exits, then you can see that Brinkley Road does make some sense.
And that exit place out?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they've got to turn around and go back, you know, that way it gets to Stewart's Creek High. Again, you're looking at transportation and labs to do that.
Can you put that in your list?
Yeah, we got, that was one that we had, that's why I brought that up earlier. You got, you do have a map, one of your maps has that one already on it.
Just makes sense to me with traffic flow, not making right turns out there.
Mr. Morgan, what was your totals again on the foothills?
Thirty-one.
One of the things that I spend some time doing, and if you haven't tried it, is really Google Maps is pretty nice. This is the Seven Oaks, I spent some time looking at it today. And one of the nice things about this kind of thing, when you look at it, you say, is, are there places that it could expand? Or what could it be? All you have to do is really, if you do, you do Google Maps, type in one of the addresses from people that made you comment. I like through several of these today, looking at comments and seeing, and you can see just here, the streets and the density. I mean, it's on your map also, on what Mr. Morgan gave, but it's, I don't know. It's just something kind of interesting when you stop and look at it, what's adjacent to it and that sort of thing. So that's really quite easy for you to do if you want to try that and look at it. It's an aerial view of what you really have on the ground.
And Mr. Morgan, if you go on Brinkley Road, can you pull that up?
Yes, sir. Brinkley is right here.
Yes, slide up if you can or do, no, otherwise.
Oh, okay.
If you come, take that, come down Brinkley Road to ninety-six and cut all the way back into Deer Run Road, how many people would that move out of Blackman? You see what I'm talking about there? Kind of like close that L shape, close that in.
All, all this right here?
Yes.
To go to Stewart's Creek.
To go to Stewart's Creek. Even on, on, on the west, yeah, right there too.
You're talking about two hundred and eleven students.
Okay, moving on over a little bit to where it joins, where ninety-six joins, that green.
You want all the center?
Yes.
Two hundred and sixty-six.
Okay.
Okay, comment?
I mean, I can see, but that's, that certainly would add more students. You're down to basically Blaise Drive, so you're really, really close to the school on that point.
But it would close in that area and.
Those students probably Blackman Middle also, I would think.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What are, what are numbers that Stewart's Creek Middle, you get that?
Yeah, I can tell you that are at the end of the third month. Stewart's Creek Middle was, is eight hundred and forty-one. So you see, I mean, Blackman High now is about three hundred and fifty more than they are eleven. Blackman Middle, I mean.
And Rock Vale Middle is?
Rock Vale Middle is eight seventy-seven.
Get a little space in both of those?
We do, we do. And you, you remember when we rezoned that just a few years ago, we opened Rock Vale Middle, you were here, that, that we had to come so far up to Veterans Parkway and up to ninety-six virtually. We, so many people at Blackman, that was very tough at that time today. So that's why we kind of backed off, I think, a little bit.
But Blackman Middle is going to be a portable city if we're not, if we're not, if we don't make some adjustments at some point in time?
I, I would really hate to see middle schools twelve-hundred, so.
Yes, sir.
That's definitely not desirable.
I think probably next year is going to be reality.
If, if the growth continues.
And I don't, there'd be something that has to be addressed on Friday because I don't think at this point, the kind of commission can be able to come in, come up with any excess funds to, to add on.
You may remember a statement that I made back in July when we took our first look at this. I had Mr. Morgan to look at, what if we just, if we were to rezone the whole county, we start looking at elementary, middle, high, and everything together? And it was moving over six thousand students, and you may remember that number. And that, that was, I mean, it's something, I believe it needs to be done. Are we ready to do that? Not much moving at one time, probably not. I think that was our conclusion with that there. But do we need to have to look at some areas? I think without of that, we're going to have to take a look at some areas.
I think it's always been our mission is to get out of the trailer classroom business anyway.
You know, we make pretty good headway, as long as they keep, you know, we got, we're dealing with what, six apartment complexes coming? Yeah, we're going to have problems. Mr. Tackett?
Long term, not for now, long term, what's the, what's the viability of addition at Blackman High School?
Mr. Clark is looking at that. He compared, it's the sixth of December. He and I discussed part of this this afternoon. So he is in the process now of doing some evaluation of several schools, elementary, middle and high, and looking at, and one of the things that he is saying now, because of the property we have remaining, is that if we add to many of our schools, we're going to have to look at a two-story. If we have to come out and build an annex to a building now, because of the remaining property that you have, still saving room for athletic fields and things like that. The look is not as great when you've got a single story. But I think in all reality, that when we look at this and some of the things that you looked at in December, that if we try to prioritize some of this and increase the capacity, then you're looking at two-story. But, but yet, at Blackman High, what bothers me again is that core area. Because what you'd have to do is very similar, and you were a part of this when we built the annexes at Oakland and Riverdale, that you literally create a place to eat. And so you have to probably, when you consider building an addition, you might create a sixth grade academy in that addition. And you, you have lunch and all coming down to that, which to try to minimize the number of movement you have, obviously for physical education and some other areas, possibly CTE, you'd still have that movement. But you could do some things to try to minimize that thing, if you do a certain annex. Now, the high school situation at Blackman High, they don't have a lot of capacity back there because we, you know, we're putting portals on pop locks and things like that now, so.
Well, we just built on them two years ago.
We just did, I know.
And it, it brought it up at least to the core, if not a little past it, so.
He'll have that information for us, core capacity in addition. He'll have that information for us, core capacity in addition to potential.
That we're all, basically for all schools, you want to count capacity after that.
That's exactly what we're, that's what he's putting together. Make a note again, Jorsensen, but he told me that, but let's make sure we stress that, to look at core capacity at the same time and consider addition.
It's a long time to three o'clock if you're eating lunch at ten.
Well, we have some things like that almost in elementary now. You have some ten, you have several ten-thirties that start with the kindergarten, and it's happening, because you try to finish by around one o'clock. Because, I mean, if a kid had breakfast, and they're not getting to go back to the lunchroom until twelve-thirty, twelve-forty, that's a long time.
Mr. Clark, you've brought us some good information about the rising eighth and ninth graders, or eighth and ninth graders rising. Do you have any projection as to what we would anticipate, recommendation from the staff on that information?
We guess have been looking at the numbers. Tonight, I just really kind of wanted to hear what you think. I mean, I, I mean, the more siblings we do, the more likely you're going to still overcrowd Blackman High and the other pieces. But I do fully understand where the junior seniors driving the car with the siblings, that, I mean, this board has in the past, very often we've tried to do that. I don't, do not see any way that we could extend it if you had a seventh grader, that by the time that last one got to be a senior, that we could grandfather again. I think it's a one-time grandfathering. If we're going to do that, it's whomever will be there next fall will be the end of the grandfathering. We had a little bit of that with the Oakland Middle and Segalons and things like that, where it went on about six years, and that's, that gets really tough. And of course, Oakland Middle is overcrowded, we had to place portals at Oakland Middle this year.
We certainly don't want to over-hylight the standard zone exemption process. And yet, at the same time, the standard zone exemption process remains, and it remains there for a family hardship, special circumstances. And also, activity exemptions, where we have zone exemptions now for participation in the Oakland IB program or other such programs. So if there's something particularly attractive at Stewart's Creek High School, and someone wanted to apply for a zone exemption for access to that program, or someone who's getting zoned for Stewart's Creek to have something that's elsewhere, those exemption pathways will still be in place.
Yes, sir, to look at those. In a, in a, in any given year, we'll have, what, eight hundred zone exemption requests, seven hundred, eight hundred?
About a thousand.
How many?
I mean, improve.
No, how many, how many requests do we have?
About a thousand a year.
Five thousand, so I'm a little bit low on that.
Or a zoning year, it'll go.
Yeah.
Isn't it that, our path practice has been, if there's a school that's overcrowded, the exemption request is coming from an overcrowded school to a school that has space, that typically is going to be granted without any special consideration on, just trying to help both sides that day.
And we have some schools that we label as, basically, they're full. If you take Blackman Middle, I mean, we would say, you're not very likely to get a zone exemption into Blackman Middle. Out of Blackman Middle, certainly, but not into it. So we have a number of schools each year that, before we tend to open in March, April timeframe, so we have a zone exemption process to begin. We'll designate certain schools as really schools already at capacity. So when somebody comes and looks at the zoning exemption, you're not likely to get one into that particular area.
We already see the town of Smyrna reaching out toward the Stewart's Creek area with municipal services and some additional investment. And this impact of placing a school there certainly will have ripple effects for the community going forward. Did the planning commission offer any other insight beyond these apartment complexes of what the town of Smyrna or the area anticipated that they may do? One of the other concerns that came up repeatedly in our public meetings was, was a concern about the state of the roads and driver safety.
When you spoke with them, that the, do they have, were not a lot of subdivisions approved with some plaques or things behind it?
And those are, and honestly, my immediate concern was that it's, that, you know, that this multi-level units coming into the town of Smyrna city limits. The Stewart's Creek area is well within their, the road boundary for Smyrna. There is a long-range traffic plan, Almaville Road is part of that. And there are some other roads that are, that are existing at the moment that will, at some point, play a part in that as well. That will be, you know, multiple loaded roads.
Historically, whenever you build a house, some divisions always crop up, look at Blackman in itself, you know. It was that middle, and then all of a sudden, it was surrounded.
Wasn't even in the city when we built Blackman Middle. And Mr. Morgan was the planner for City of Smyrna, if you remember, before we picked him up, so that's why I turned to him again. Because when he talks about long-range plans, he knows what has been looked at in the future, but how quickly tends to be the economic factors into how quickly it can develop.
Just as an example, that, I worked for Smur utilities, I guess it's been almost seven years ago, or six years ago now. That sewer force thing that sits out next to the school has not, has not gone any further, but is sitting there waiting for the capacity to draw on it. And if nothing's built around it yet, so I do believe that the school will draw in, that, you know, more capacity on that force thing, sir.
Any other comments?
Let me, let me go back now, could I kind of summarize some things for a little bit to say, and Mr. Morgan, your notes too. We were asking to look at Stewart Spring, Spring Drive, that was one we're talking about. And then pass through that Cloverhill, again, you asked some questions about foothills tonight, we've got some number counts. What other areas now do you, did you make a note of that you would like us to specially consider? That was added at the last one here, which is, that particular area, we'll make a note too.
You're going to like, check.
You mentioned Oakland in that, you know, comment from the Oakland service, and we'll keep it, keep in mind.
Okay.
And you had Seven Oaks.
Seven Oaks, yeah, and we already had that one on our radar, but.
Have you got any other questions or comments from Mr. Odom, academics, athletics, or anything I could, you wanted to check on?
Mr. Odom, it might be worthwhile to, now that we do have a principal name, and review that timeline as to when he will be officially in place at the, at the school and whatever, but he's already shared with me.
He's working on it.
He's working already.
Not on the payroll.
Once I've talked to her here, if you haven't met Dr. Odom, you should, and have the option to ask him some more specific questions of what his vision would be in that regard. But a timeline is when he'll officially be on site, when his assistants, when his coaches, when his teachers, when his curriculum will be further purged.
We were going to formally introduce him, I guess Thursday night, at the board meeting, he's on the agenda for that one. Like you say, he's already been working at, attending two double S double A meetings, planning, talking about the positions. We can, at that time, come back, he starts with January one. He will go from the assistant principal at Blackman High School to full-time, dealing with Stewart's Creek High School. He's also being offered his assistant principals, and we start picking up assistant principals to work with him. Jeff had built into the budget a couple of guidance counselors. We're talking a little bit like that, we may start initially with one guidance counselor, and a person, another person in CTE or something like that, because the CTE program is so large and developing that. So they'll begin to work, and that comes a little bit later on in the winter months. But we've got, I don't have that with me, but we've got that whole layout of when each of these things are supposed to happen, which we can have for you also, if you'd like that.
And also, maybe a projected date when people would want to do the grandfathering, then when that, would likely be, when they're going to be expected to make some decision.
People need to be make, thinking very, once you decide on the zone lines, people need to be anticipating, have a decision made around March first. And the reason, the reason we have to start looking at March first is because we have to move personnel from some of the other schools, plan for textbook moves and all. So, you know, it's kind of like our magnet schools now. You've got December, you know, to make application to one of our magnet schools, and then January, we go through it, and then February, they start sending out acceptance letters, so that we're ready by March first. So if you're thinking about wanting a zone exemption to Stewart's Creek High School, considering that, then you need to be thinking about March first. If, and we'll have a process, if you are a sibling, if that rule happens to pass, then we'll also have you fill out so that Mr. Evans can track it. In this same timeframe, we'll be talking about the siblings too, that you intend to remain, so that we can, again, balance those numbers and look at our counts. So that will be in that same timeframe. But March first for high schools is really a big time. Middle schools typically in February have a parent meeting, and they go over with parents. By then, we have explorer scores back. Explorer scores tell the parents what is the aptitude that their student has shown for high school courses and all. So that's really, really good information. So our middle schools usually have a presentation in February for parents to attend, go over those explorer scores, help them interpret what it means as far as aptitude for the student and course selection for high school. And then the high schools, to actually start, this will be Oakland, Smyrna, Riverdale, everybody. We'll be doing around the first week of March, starts the process of scheduling. You'll have some high schools that even January the first, if they're not in any of this affected area, Riverdale will very often start looking sometime in January, February. If you're a junior going up to senior level, as you look at their pathways and that sort of thing, they'll begin on their seniors, looking at that in the winter.
Will you have a freshman orientation for Stewart's Creek somewhere?
We are looking at a process, if we can pull this off, we've talked about, very good idea, I think, from Mr. Holliday over there. Because, because of the occupancy and the fire marshal, there's not going to be a way that we can get in the building in large numbers of people till sometime, probably this summer. I mean, it's just a fact of life because of occupancy thing. But we're talking about, Mr. Holliday suggested, that we can probably work our way with the contractor, with the fire marshal, to do some virtual tours. So what we plan on doing is looking at, is going through with, with cameras, going through and looking at Stewart's Creek, and sometime at Stewart's Creek Middle, or something like that. And maybe doing that sometime even late winter, certainly spring, to show people how it's progressing. Maybe a series of meetings and more of a virtual tour, which we could then post on our website for people to also take this virtual tour. But, and we're just limited by regulations about opening it up, the safety issue from the fire marshal just won't let us. So good idea from Mr. Holliday on that, I think, that we can follow through on.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Odom, we'll come back next Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully go over your recommendation, hopefully you'll have a recommendation.
We will.
At that time, and.
We will.
Hopefully we'll move forward to have something to vote on December fourth. Nothing else, we're adjourned.